As the disk.
There we go, we're going again.
I tried it on my computer, let me record, so I wouldn't, I hadn't started it.
Perfect, thanks Brandy.
Okay, as they say in the movie business, back to one. Um, so, uh, the, 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 the program for 2020, 2030, which included the updated uh, water system capital improvement plan or the CIP and the methodology alternatives for an update to the city's water system capital facility charge or the CFC. The purpose of the presentation was to, one, determine whether the current water system CFCS are adequate to fund both the needed water cap improvement plan and to maintain the current water system and two, to explore alternative uh, capital facility charge methodologies. Per council's discussion or direction at these meetings, ordinance number oh two, three dash two one will amend municipal code thirteen oh four oh two five to effectuate the proposed increase to the water capital facility charge. Staff recommends opening the public or holding this second public hearing.
Okay, that, uh, this is actually a continuation, I believe, of the prior public hearing. So, Brandy, is there, is there anyone from the public that wishes to provide testimony on the water uh, system capital facilities charges? They would need to raise their hand and the clerk will bring you into the council meeting.
And Mayor, we did receive that letter today too, um, that was asked to be shared.
Yes.
So I do not see any members of the public that has their hand raised and just for the record, there is a letter from Tarragon.
It was forward to the council, all the council members regarding the, the phased approach.
Sydney Road Apartments, and I'll file up with the record with the council agenda. So at this time again, I do not have anybody raising their hands wishing to comment during the public hearing.
Last chance, and I will close the public hearing on this matter. And we have a second public hearing this evening, uh, which is the downtown sub area plan and proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan and development regulations. This is you, Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. Um, tonight we have a public hearing on the proposed downtown sub area plan. This was recommended for approval, um, earlier this month by the planning commission and we had a full public hearing there that was advertised um, to the public and, uh, we had a few members of the public show up and testify, nothing controversial, and so we were just providing one final opportunity to see if any, uh, final comments, uh, were, were, um, uh, we're going to be made on the project before we close the hearing. We are recommending that you close the hearing tonight, the, um, we did pull item seven B off of the agenda and the plan itself and the development regulations are in final form, they won't change. It's only the, uh, the findings and making sure that the ordinance is written in a way that's consistent with the planned action ordinance that will be forthcoming uh, later this summer. So, um, the recommendation is to open, uh, the public hearing, take testimony and close the public hearing. And, um, and then this action item would come back to you, uh, in June. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing on the downtown sub area plan and proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan and development regulations. If you wish to testify on this matter, please raise your hand and the clerk will bring you into the meeting.
Mayor, I shall no hands are raised, uh, to comment during this public hearing.
Last chance to testify on this matter. You're not hearing none, why will close the public hearing on this matter? So we are to our business items now. Uh, the first is, uh, item A, adoption of an ordinance, uh, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code thirteen point oh four point oh two five and increasing the water system capital facilities charge. Mr. Dorsey, this is the matter we just held the public hearing on, or the first public hearing on, so this is yours.
Correct, so, well, we have the first public hearing, this, the second public hearing we just had, so, um, unless council wants me to read back into the record, the summary, the summary is the same that was in the, the second public hearing held just earlier tonight. And so, with that, staff recommends adoption of ordinance number zero two, three dash two one, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code thirteen oh four point oh two five and increasing the water system capital facility charge. And you have both a red line and a clean version of that ordinance in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey, Mr. Clausen, you raised your hand?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number zero two, three dash two one, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code thirteen dot zero four dot zero two five and increasing the water system capital facilities charge.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember member Lucarelli. Uh, is there any comment or any questions of staff? Councilmember Rosa Pepe, I see you raised your hand.
Do one comment, uh, Mayor, I'd like to thank staff for all the work and making sure we have all the information and questions answered, really appreciate your diligence on this one.
You've touched this a lot in the last, uh, couple months, so, and, and it's a big, it's a big deal, so, and the, what, what we've gone through. Other comments or questions? Okay, with that, you'll be voting on, uh, adoption of an ordinance, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code thirteen oh point oh four and point oh two five and increasing the water system capital facility charges. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance passes. We have removed item B, that, so that takes us to item C, adoption of an ordinance regarding special events permits after July first under the governor's COVID nineteen guidance. Clerk Reinderson.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm not sure if the city attorney wanted to take the lead on this, uh, report, or if she wants me to start, okay. I'll go ahead and start and then if I missed anything, then, uh, legal counsel can jump in. Um, so the city regulates special events on public property um, or that impact the public's use of public property such as fairs, parades, and fun runs to ensure the safe coexistence of these events within the general public. The city has been in a continued state of emergency since March twenty twenty and subject to the restrictions established by the governor and the state and local health officials cautioning against the conduct of special events and large gatherings. Consistent with that direction, by motion on March sixteen, two thousand and twenty twenty one, the uh, city council suspended the receipt of applications for special events due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, pending additional guidance from the governor and health officials. On May thirteen, twenty twenty one, Governor Inslee announced a statewide reopening date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and the turn transition of all the counties to phase three of the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery reopening plan effective May eighteen, twenty twenty one. That announcement, um, which we have provided to is exhibit one in the packet, stated that the governor anticipates a full reopening on June thirtieth, but stated that the announcement does not mean, I just lost my staff report, hold on, sorry about that. So the announcement does not mean that the Washington State of Emergency will lift on June thirtieth. The governor's office, health officials, and the Washington Department of Labor and Industry continue to work on specific guidance as to the implementation of their directive after June thirtieth. While in phase three, special events are limited to fifty percent capacity indoor or four hundred people outdoor, as well as the requirements set out in directives from the governor and the Washington Department of Labor and Industries for his, for events. Again, see, um, exhibits two and three, attach the staff report. Um, eating and drinking is also attached as exhibit four. And for foot and motorized races, um, was included as exhibit five. The city has received requests from events hosts and sponsors who seek to hold events, um, in July of twenty twenty one. By the proposed ordinance, the council would authorize staff to begin receiving applications for events that will occur after July first, twenty twenty one. The Port Orchard Municipal Code currently requires an applicant, um, is submitted a minimum of thirty days in advance of the event for events that do not involve, involve road closures in, uh, one hundred and twenty days for events that do require road closures. In addition, applicants who apply for an event that does not require road closures less than ninety days, but thirty days or more uh, days prior to the event, uh, need to pay an additional fifty dollars non-refundable, uh, processing fee. For events that occur in July twenty twenty one, the council would need to modify these timelines. Staff recommends a minimum of thirty days to process, but if workflow is reprioritized, the timeline could be shortened. Staff recommends advising applicants that the end, excuse me, that the event will be subject to all of the applicable COVID nineteen related restrictions that exist at the time of the event, as well as cautioning applicants that the city cannot control whether the event, um, receives approval from other relevant agencies, including but not limited to the Washington State of, um, Department of Health, Department of Transportation, Department of Labor to Industries, Kitsap Transit, and the South Kitsap Fire and Rescue. So with that, staff recommends that the council authorize the receipt of applications with special events, special to certain restrictions, have provided a motion for, uh, your recommendation, um, and open up to legal counsel for her to add anything that was not stated.
I think that was perfect, Brandy. Um, the only thing to add is since this agenda staff report was inserted into your packet, we've received additional guidance from the Department of Labor and Industries with regards to masking regulations, but we still await any and all regulations as to what the world will look like after June thirtieth. And I assume that will not be forthcoming until at least mid-June. Um, there are some rumblings as well that we may be reopening soon depending on, uh, transmission data, but that's all also speculative.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance temporarily modifying chapter five point nine four of the Port Orchard Municipal Code and authorize it to receive a special event permits for events occurring after July one, twenty twenty one, so be two conditions.
So I get. So motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Karchardi. Comments or questions? Councilmember Deener?
So first of all, this is a long time coming, so I think this is a big deal that we should all recognize and celebrate. Um, but my question specifically is, can the thirty day or the ninety day, I believe, or was it a hundred and twenty, can those, um, pre-application requirements be waived, or do we have to abide by the thirty day in advance application requirement?
So they absolutely can be waived, and that's the ordinance is drafted allowing the council to choose to waive, uh, those, those periods, because otherwise we could not have events in July. Um, the, the big caveat that's, that's referenced both in the ordinance and in the staff report is that the a hundred and twenty day regulation relating to events that occur on, uh, highway property or property controlled by others. Uh, the city can do its best to assist an applicant in seeking the approval of Department of Transport, uh, transportation and Top Kitsap Fire and Rescue, but we can't guarantee that they have the capabilities to expedite processing, so, um, the, the ordinance is drafted to make it very clear and require that applicants sign an acknowledgement that even though you're being permitted on an expedited basis, that doesn't mean your event can be held if you're unable to get, for example, DOT approval. So staff's recommendation is to not go lower than thirty days unless there is a, uh, directive or some sort of guidance from council as to the import of this for staff. Um, and I think the clerk can speak to that a bit. We talked at length about sort of the, the absolute minimum amount of time necessary for processing. Um, but that doesn't factor in public records and other obligations that are on the clerk's desk that potentially could get shifted if this is the directive of council is to focus on this, um, in order to make those July events occur.
We're, we're looking for, uh, an amendment to, uh, fill in the blank on section two, is that what you're saying?
Yes, thank you.
And, and it's our intent to, I mean, if, I believe most of these organizations are going to have their applications in tomorrow, which is going to give us five weeks, you know, to July first, or just about five weeks, so, um, and we're going to do the, our absolute best to get these processed and, and turned around, but there are other agencies that aren't part of the city of Port Orchard that are involved in some of these processes, so, uh, people have to be understanding of that. So, Councilmember Ashby, I see your hand raised.
Yes, um, I know that, that there are guidelines, um, for different types of events that were included in our packet. And I'm wondering if we have altered or added anything to our application, um, to identify specifically what accommodations are being made for the specific requirements. Um, I'm kind of looking at the parade because it, um, for each quarter mile, they can only have so many people and they have to be set apart by family groups of six feet. So, my question is, are we prepared to be able to evaluate that? And, or, or not, um, you know, and what's our, what may be any of our concerns? I'm just wanting to make sure that we have an application that addresses all of the special needs, um, that has, that are described, um, in our packet that we got from the state.
Yes, so I think the answer is twofold. One, um, I believe Brandy and I can absolutely work to have the application robust and specify that these are the current requirements. Um, the second element to my answer is, we don't know if these requirements will be in place as of July first, if the reopening occurs on June thirtieth. And so the ordinance and the application and communications with, with Brandy and the applicants will emphasize that events will be subject to whatever restrictions exist as of the date of the event. And, uh, as we've discussed previously, um, uh, the, this, the onus is uh, not necessarily on the city to enforce these state regulations, so requiring that the event have a plan in place that meets these regulations suffices as far as compliance with the regulations of the governors, um, proffering. So the application will absolutely require a plan that complies, um, but it will obviously have to be somewhat fluid, given that we don't know what regulations will be in place.
Councilmember Lucarelli and then Councilmember Karchardi.
Okay, so I am looking at the, um, refundable, non-refundable fees. Um, so no, no matter what, it's a little bit risky, I mean, fifty dollars isn't a huge amount, but is there any possibility, should anything not work out, that the fifty dollars could be refunded? The administrative fee or not?
At the, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I would say you're the city council, but we, we do have far more than that and, and staff time and expenses. The fifty dollars is hardly covering our cost to process this stuff. It's your, but it's your call. Councilmember Karchardi?
Yeah, I would just say, I really like this, this action and, and the way it's, it's worded. You know, there's so many unknowns, but instead of, you know, being a council that's not being responsive to our community, we're figuring out a way to do what we can do. And I think that's the symbolic message behind this, is that there's still a lot of unknowns, that's still a lot of things to work with, but let's start having the discussions, let's start preparing. If things change and they're, they're beyond our control, um, that could happen. But right now, we're, we're doing all we can to control what we can, and, and I, I like that message sent to our, our, our community. And as far as the refundability, um, I, I kind of agree with the fact that we've got a lot of staff time and, and expenses into this, and because it is only fifty dollars, um, I think that's a risk that, I think it's an equitable risk and I wouldn't, I wouldn't waive it, I wouldn't be necessarily in favor of that.
Appreciate your comment. Any last comments? So we have a motion on the table, and I think we're looking for an amendment to that motion to fill in one of the blanks.
Correct, the blank that's, um, in the ordinance is at section two, and it states all applications for a special event permit for an event occurring in July, August, or September of twenty twenty one shall be filed no less than blank calendar days prior to the date of the event.
And, and thirty seems like the appropriate number to, to me, but, um, Councilmember Deener, you raised your hand?
Well, I, I just was curious what the city clerk's office is comfortable with. If it's thirty days, then, then that works for me as well.
Yes, I can support thirty days.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With the permission of the second, I would modify my motion to include the thirty day application period.
Second agrees.
Okay. Further discussion? Questions? All right, you'll be voting on adoption of an ordinance regarding special events permits after July first. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none. We've got a bunch of community event sponsors that, uh, have a path forward, I hope. We're to item D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Otis Elevator Company for the City Hall Elevator Maintenance. Mr. Dorsey?
To hear your council members. Public Works Department budgeted twenty thousand dollars within the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two biennial budget for continued City Hall elevator maintenance. On May first, twenty twenty one, the current contract C O five one dash one six with Otis Elevator Company will expire. Consistent with the city's procurement policies and Washington state law that allows the city to utilize master contracts for goods and services through the Washington Department of Enterprise Services. On March thirty first, twenty twenty one, Public Works Department received a proposal from Otis Elevator Company based on, uh, the Washington Department and Enterprise Services Contract Number zero one, two, one, nine, Master Contract Pricing. After staff reviewed the proposal and after completion of the bidder's checklist on March thirty first, twenty twenty one, the city's Public Works Department recommends Otis Elevator Company for continuation or continued maintenance of the city elevator, uh, City Hall elevator for a five-year term with options for renewal. Staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution zero two eight dash two one, thereby approving contract number C zero four six dash two one with Otis Elevator Company using the Washington Department of Enterprise Services Contract Number zero one, two, one, nine, for ten thousand dollars per year for a five-year term. The motion consideration should read, I move to adopt Resolution oh two eight dash two one and authorize the mayor to execute contract.
Councilmember Karchardi?
Um, I would move to adopt Resolution number zero two eight dash two one, um, authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C zero six, C zero four six dash two one with Otis Elevator Company using uh, WADES contract number zero one, two, one, nine for ten thousand dollars per year for a five-year term.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Karchardi, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Questions to Mr. Dorsey on this matter? Okay, hearing none, you'll be voting to adopt resolution approving a contract with Otis Elevator Company for the City Hall Elevator Maintenance. All in favor, please say aye.
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 None opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. We're to item E now, our last business item. Uh, lodging tax, uh, funding allocations for special events and festivals. We just approved festivals and now people want money to do those festivals, so, Clerk Reinderson?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So as you may know, each year, city staff solicits applicants to apply for lodging tax funds to be used for tourism marketing and/or for marketing and operations of special events and, uh, festivals designed to attract tourists. However, due to COVID nineteen and the city being subject to restrictions established by the governor and state and local health officials cautioning against the conduct of special events and large gatherings, the council limited the solicitation to tourism marketing at their August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty twenty City Council Meeting. On May thirteen, twenty twenty one, Governor Inslee announced that a statewide reopening date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Staff is seeking direction from the council on if they wish to open up the remainder of the solicitation of funds from the lodging tax fund for marketing and operations of special events and festivals. Um, just to point out that Resolution number fifty four dash twenty, uh, the council approved partial allocation in the amount of fifty two thousand, two hundred dollars for tourism and marketing, leaving the amount available to allocate to, um, operations, events, and a festival, forty seven thousand, eight hundred dollars in one hundred thousand dollars for this year and one hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty was budgeted.
Councilmember Chang?
I move to authorize staff to proceed with the twenty twenty one lodging tax application and allocation process for special events and festivals designed to attract tourists.
So again, Councilmember Chang, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Councilmember Karchardi, you have, uh, calling?
Yeah, just a concept to throw out there, I'm again, trying to do everything we can do to, to move these processes forward, I think is the right thing to do. As far as the funding amounts, maybe we use the words of allocate up to, um, you know, because we don't know what we don't know, and it just gives us some flexibility and, and it, and it speaks to the community that we're not necessarily guaranteeing that these full amounts will be awarded. It'll be awarded based on the recommendation of the committee and, um, you know, we'll be looking for their guidance ultimately make that decision, but maybe those words up to would be helpful.
Councilmember Ashby and then Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
A question I had, because I know it takes a while to solicit the applications and go through that process, and that we have to get the committee together, which I believe is already established, but I'm wondering what about the idea of finishing this year's and soliciting, um, the twenty-two allocation at the same time? So that we're only going through that work once?
Not a bad idea. Councilmember Rosa Pepe, you're the chair of that committee, what do you think of that idea?
Yeah, well, first of all, we have, uh, a lot of unused funds, uh, both previous year and, and this year. Um, what I'd like to do is, um, I've talked to Brandy already and we're getting a quick committee member, uh, meeting together. Uh, some of the events, I don't know what events are going to be submitted. Uh, what I'd like to do is see what events are submitted and also to see what additional funds are asked for. Uh, first, I, I don't think we'll see, you know, I mean, you know, the bottom line is that an event to get LTAC has to put, as we proverbial says, heads in beds. In other words, bring people in, which some of the events may not, may not do because of, you know, the limited timeframe. So before we take any specific action, I'd like to get the committee together, see where we're at and see what solicitations come in first, and then bring that back to council.
Sounds like you have a plan. Other comments or questions? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, uh, related to lifting the restrictions on the lodging tax funding for special events and to start an allocation process. All in favor, please say aye.
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 None, the motion passes. We have no discussion items. Uh, council committee reports, uh, I believe the Transportation Committee met, uh, tonight. And that's really, we're kind of running late here. I think that's the only committee report that, uh, his committee has met since our last meeting. Um, type, check that, Finance met last week and didn't give their report, so we'll, we'll call them finance also. So, uh, Councilmember Ashby, you want to call, uh, give a transportation report?
Yes, we had a very time-efficient transportation meeting this evening. And we talked about, uh, the Bethel Lincoln Roundabout and the companion compact roundabout at Mitchell and Lincoln. And the, um, extending the contract with our current designer to include, um, uh, the design for that compact roundabout. I believe that particular cost is in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars, and I believe we're going to be bringing that back to uh, council on June eighth to amend the contract to include the design of the second roundabout. We also had some discussion about the old Clifton multimodal plan and perhaps breaking that plan into sections so that financing would be easier and moving it forward would be, um, again, an easier, an expedited process for us rather than doing the entire plan, um, next year. I think that is basically what we talked about. I would ask Scott and Jay, was there anything else that came up? We reviewed the, um, KRCC and, uh, transportation work that's going on and the RPTO, the Regional Transport, the Peninsula Regional Planning Transportation Organization, we reviewed the work we're doing there. Is there anything else, Scott or Jay, that, um, would warrant mentioning?
I would just add that, um, you know, right now, Chris is getting ready to submit for, is working on for grants and that the council will be getting a uh, in-depth brief, in-depth brief, uh, transportation in September.
Thank you, I forgot that piece, yes, Scott?
Um, I think also, um, Mark pointed out that the compact roundabout could be built at a cost of about one point one to one point three million, if I remember correctly.
And he also indicated that he's got his fingers crossed for a potential funding source for the construction. Yeah.
I think the plan is, is if we get the grant, we move forward with the, the bid alternative. We don't get the grant, then we move forward the three-way stop because we, we won't have local funds to, to, for that ad alternate.
Right.
Correct.
I, that'll be brought to council next week, I'm sure with a, uh, more thorough discussion on it. And yeah, and as Jay said, Chris is going to do a presentation at a work study in September. For the full council to understand the, um. The work that they have planned because there's been con- concern about preservation projects and what we're doing. And so we'll have an in-depth, um, review on that in September.
That way everybody understands the terms of mill and fill and overlays and we're all talking the same lingo. So, all right, uh, finance committee, I know you met last week.
Yes, we did. Uh, we met just before the work study, at which point the work study dealt with most of all of the. Items that the finance committee dealt with. The only exception to that is, uh, we went over the. Uh, sales tax and the REIT, uh, funding. Sales tax is continuing to come in, uh, very strong. We are, um. Year to date, basically actual versus budget, we're about 28% roughly over. Budget in the sales tax and in the REIT money, it's percentage wise, it's much greater. Uh, we had, must have had a fairly large amount of retail or, uh, uh, real estate sales going on in March. Uh, we're about 264% over for actual versus budget, but it's pretty early in the biennial. So, um, I just wanted to share those numbers. Like I said, sales tax is continuing to come in very strong. Uh, but we've got a long ways to go to get through the, the biennial budget. So that's it.
Thank you for your report. I'm, I'm, if for the sake of time, I, I was just going to let the meeting dates for all the other committees. Uh, were shown on the, uh, on our agenda. And, and if any other committees have a report, why don't you just go ahead and speak up versus me calling on them individually. I don't believe any of the other committees have met. Councilmember Lucarelli?
We did meet actually the sewer advisory committee.
Okay.
On the 19th and I'll make it quick, but we talked about capital projects. Um, they've been busy working on projects during the COVID times, um, and they worked on some upgrades. The scum pit pump was purchased and installed. That's an important element in a sewer plant. Um, they replaced their sluice gates and again, they did most of the work themselves. Um, and, um, they came up with a cool system of replacing those. Um, and got that finished and they're working on, um, the sharple's repair. Which doesn't sound like much, but it actually is a pretty expensive repair of, or replacement, 850,000 to 1.2 million. And they're working on figuring out how to pay for that. Um, we had an update on the Marina pump station and we're working towards an 80% design. And working on, it looks sounds like there's a verbal confirmation of a loan. Um, so moving forward with all of that, we will be meeting again in July 21st.
Lots of technical terms there in that one. The only thing we were missing was the half a lumps and woosels.
Just that pit pump.
Yeah.
A scum pit pump. That's a really big one.
Any other committees have anything to share? Councilmember Ashby, do you have any outside agency reports?
Not that I can think of right now. Uh, KRCC is, um, we have moved our June 1st. Executive Board meeting to July 6th at 3 o'clock. And that is so we can work, finish the, um, work on the CPPs. And there will be a public hearing on July 6th for the CPPs. The CPPs right now are out for public comment. They can be found on the KRCC website. There's a banner on the front page that you can click through and look at the draft CPPs and make, make public comment. So that's all I have right now.
My outside agencies, I, Mr. Claw, I happen to be the chair this year of the transit board and Mr. Clausen called me. Uh, last week to inform me that he got a stated grant for 3.1 or 3.2 million dollars. To fund the construction of the Ruby Creek Park and Ride Lot. So, uh, that's well on its way and, uh, acquire, gonna finish the design and acquire the rest of the real estate. And, uh, we'll be off and running on that project. So that's really exciting. Um, the mayor's report, I'm just a few things, uh, I'll be brief. Uh, if you, we, uh, those, you're the claims. Uh, the vouchers and claims, uh, when you reviewed that, you probably saw the smart locks, uh, on there. Uh, with Stanley and, uh, recently installed the smart locks on all of our sewer and water facilities to increase security. Uh, previously we had a contract that did the public workshop and prior to that, uh, city hall. Uh, so the only building that's lacking now is 720. So I hope, uh, at the mid-year review, we can. Consider tackling that project and there's a few doors that, uh, like the front door to the council chambers and some other places that. Would be very conducive to having, uh, your, your smart key working versus having to go around the back. So. Um, so you'll see probably, uh, a request there. Um, I have to report on our HR policy changes. I think I even emailed this one out to you, the updated policy related to masks at the facility. And the vaccinated employees are, uh, eligible not to wear masks and they just have to provide, show some documentation. To our HR manager. I'm a little disappointed that only 39% of our employees have taken advantage of that to offer. And I just want to, and the finance director of the attorney hasn't even heard this yet. So I'll probably get shot tomorrow at our staff meeting. But, uh, she's scowling at me right now. Um, how do you guys feel about me offering a vacation day? To, to vaccinated employees and, uh, is a carrot. Um. You can scowl at me, give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down and. I said, I'm seeing a couple of thumbs up. I've seen a couple of heads shaking no, kind of split. I don't know. Maybe we'll talk about it at the staff meeting tomorrow and I'll, I'll bring it back and, and talk about it again some more. Um, park surveys up and running. It's on our website and there's signs in our parks and there's a survey for McCormick Village. And lastly, there's an AWC annual meeting on Thursday, June 24th. It is virtual. It's at 10 o'clock. And I would like to, we could get three voting delegates and I have to register, you have to register for that. I tend to be one. Does anybody else intend to be, would like to participate? Um, and, uh, be a voting delegate. So we just have to tell them who our delegates are. So maybe you want to think about that and look at your calendars and then get back to me. I'll bring it up again in two weeks. And that is my mayor's report.
Mayor, what was the date of that?
June 24th, 10 a.m. Probably lasts about an hour, hour and a half. I usually get that council member Ashby, but, uh, she's not speaking up this time.
Well, she's going to be where there's no cell or internet service on that date.
Okay, fair enough. So if somebody else wants to participate in the Association of Washington City's annual meeting. Uh, so where you get to vote on the board, uh, members, I'm not up for election this time. So, but I am on the board.
I would just, Mayor, I would just encourage any council member, if they haven't attended an AWC annual convention. There's really a lot of good information there and I have always. Come away with, um, practical things that can help me do the, the job better and help the city. So it's something I really recommend and I, I just unfortunately I can't make it this year.
Yeah, the conference is actually that week over three days and it culminates with this, this annual meeting on Thursday. So. Uh, I, I too, it's where I, uh, found the vendor for our website. I always, I take something away from it every time. And it is virtual, so it's pretty painless. You don't have to travel anywhere, fortunately or unfortunately. Um, but, uh, I encourage you to participate. Um, it's very, I think I find it very valuable myself, or I wouldn't.
Uh, what was the time for that?
The manual meeting is actually on 10, 10 a.m. on, on Thursday, the 24th. And the two days before that are the conference and the, the different sessions, uh, that are available. And we'd gladly register you if, if you wish to attend.
I'm hoping to be out of town.
Okay, well, you're entitled to a vacation too. Okay, all right, um. We, department heads, maybe a quick round robin, anybody, I'm not going to call on you individually. Do any of the department heads have a director's report? I'm just trying to get us to the executive session. Anybody have anything to share? Oh, look at that, hands raised, Mr. Dorsey and then the chief, Chief Brown. Dorsey, go ahead.
Uh, just let you know that we're filling the 580 reservoir. So that's a pretty good milestone. So.
Wars reservoir out in McCormick Woods. That's awesome. Good to hear. How many gallons?
Uh, 1.1 million, I think.
Little bit of water. All right, Chief Brown?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to again, thank the council for supporting us with working on accreditation and let you know that. Our mock is starting on Thursday and we'll run through next Thursday and that'll give us a good idea. Of how quickly we can get to our real one. Um, if we stay on track, that will be July. So again, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief, for the update on that. All right, we are to our second citizen comment period. Is there anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Need to raise your hand and the clerk will bring you into the meeting.
Okay, so I have a, uh, three hands raised and I'm just going to take the first one, which is Stephen S. So give me just a minute and I'll bring you over. All right, he should be able to, uh, speak.
Okay, Stephen, if you wouldn't mind addressing, uh, uh, stating your name for the, for the record and.
Hi, hi, I'm a, I'm not Stephen S., but I am Mrs. S. Um, my name is Mara Louise Schmerfeld. And for the record, it's a M A R A Louise, last name S C H M E R F E L D. Um, I, I'll make it quick. Um, I, I can see Zoom fatigue. Um, and, uh, I've been there. Um, I, I did want to thank you for, um, putting these, uh, meetings online. I've really, um, found it much, much easier to access the meetings this way. Um, and I'm sure other people have as well. Um, so I'm sure you're all hoping to get back into the same room at some point. Um, but I'm wondering if, um, there's been some consideration to the idea of keeping, um, a Zoom element. For public participation. Um, I mean, it would seem to be that the transparency, the civic, um, engagement, the accessibility. Um, the, the accommodation factors would more than pay for a, a Zoom license, um, for people to be able to sort of chime in. Um, so I just thought I would, I would mention that and I was curious as to know what, you know, what, what you thought of that. Um, and my second, um, question was, I noticed that there was a, um, a pop-up, uh, vaccination clinic planned for, um, Poles Bows Farmer's Market. Um, this weekend. And I'm wondering if we're online for something like that, um, or if anybody's, uh, knows how to get that done for us. It seems like, um, uh, those events have been gaining a lot of traction, whether they're at baseball games or, um. Uh, you know, farmers markets or whatever. Um, I'm wondering, you know, who to get in touch with if I want to try to get that to happen. Or if that's something you guys are working on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and, uh, based on the, the comments, the discussion we had at the work study, we are looking at a hybrid model. On, uh, when we return so that we can, uh, bring this, this Zoom element, uh, and keep, keep, keep certain aspects of it. And then I know I was, uh, I was vaccinated here in Port Orchard at one of the pop-ups. So, uh, we, we aren't. The health district is really the lead on that, our kids at public health district. And then there's resources there on their website that could help you with that. So. All right, Brandy, uh, if you could bring the next person forward.
All right, so let me do some rearranging real quick. Okay, so the next one is Susan Lee. And she should be able to, um, speak as well.
All right, Susan, if you want to turn your video on and your, in your, uh, and activate your microphone and address the council.
Here we go. Can you see me?
Uh, we see your name, but we don't see your, your face.
Why is it not? Oh my gosh. There we go. Okay. Thank you very much, um, to the council for the voting about. The special events applications for reopening those. I'm with POPSa and I'm the chair for the Artisan and Vintage Fair. That coincides with the Chris Craft Rendezvous. And I'm very excited. We, the event is July 16th and 17th. So we'll be submitting the application. My question, I just need a little clarification. Is the application going to be revised? From what's on the city council website right now?
Like, likely it will be.
Okay, so.
Clerk's office can help you with that.
All right, thank you very much. And that is it.
Right, thank you for your comment.
All right, again, let me do some rearranging here. And I have one more person that would like to speak during the citizens' comment. Okay, and the name on the board is Bryce. So Bryce should be able to speak now.
Um, Bryce, there's Bryce, just showed up. Bryce, if you could turn your video on and your, turn your, turn your microphone on. There we go. And, and identify yourself for the record.
Uh, I'm Bryce McCain, citizen of Port Orchard. Uh, good evening, Mayor, city council members and everybody else in this meeting. I've never seen this in a bit. It's, uh, pretty interesting to see how many people are involved in, uh, this Zoom meeting. Uh, so for public comment, first I'm making a public comment. So if I get, uh, off course, tap me back within the lines. I actually really appreciate that. Uh, so to, uh, talk about Zoom meetings, I do appreciate you going on Facebook and trying to get more civic and active engagement. With all 14,000 something odd citizens of Port Orchard. I think that's really great. Uh, it increased transparency and that is appreciated. And like the other citizens, I hope this is actually carried through. Uh, even once you can be in city council again, since not everybody can attend the meetings due to kids, childcare or work. That this would continue to allow civic engagement from a technological standpoint. Uh, a comment about your Facebook live post, it would be beneficial to know what agenda items are going to be discussed that night. Uh, rather than just saying, here's a meeting, please join, saying, here's a meeting, here's what we're going to talk about. Here's why you should join. Here's why it's more of an active engagement than a passive engagement. And I think you might get a little bit more, uh, participation that way. And I'd like, probably like to see. What you're going to be talking about through the Facebook agenda items. Uh, another thing, uh, Facebook posts, uh, you have some big wins tonight. Uh, sewers being fixed, the capital improvement plan with the sewers, transit plans being approved. Uh, as a citizen, I would kind of like to see that on the Facebook page to see that you're busy. You're doing a lot for the city of Port Orchard, but it's not being reflected in the social media platform. And I think it's going underappreciated, the work that's being done and. Possibly sharing a little bit more on your social media and celebrating your wins would, uh, as a citizen, that'd be really awesome to see. Uh, and it again, just, uh, take it more about city council. It's a passive thing to bring in more of an. Active engagement with the citizens and being more specific about your wins, what you're talking about and agenda items. I just think that'd be really awesome to see from, you know, sitting on this side of the table. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Brandy, do we have anybody else?
That is it.
Okay, council, you were sent a separate link for an executive session. We're going to head there. And I would propose we each take a two-minute break, maybe to stretch our legs and. Uh, when we get over to the, uh, executive session and Charlie, would you mind, uh, reading the, uh? The, the, uh, the recitals related to the executive session and, and why we're holding it?
Absolutely. So we are going into executive session pursuant to RCW 423110 subpart I. Pertaining to, uh, put, uh, legal risks related to a potential legal action. Um, and I believe, did you state the, the length of time there? Apologies.
I think we'll start with 20. I think we'll start with twenty minutes. I hope it's not much more than that, but we'll start there and, um. We plan to take no action afterwards, uh, and, uh, so we're heading now into that executive session, if you could find that link. And I'll see you there in a moment.
And since, and if staff didn't receive an invitation, we get to go home, right?
You get, see you later. See you tomorrow at the staff meeting.
Okay, thank you.